Good evening, everyone. I will call this regular city council meeting of July 24th, 2018 to order. I don't see any open forum cards, so we will move right to the pledge of allegiance. If you'll all stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I would move the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of July 10th, 2018, and the city council meeting of July 10th, 2018.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or second?
Yeah. Okay, opposed? None. All right. This time, it's hats off to Hometown Hits, as is my usual course of order. I'll ask Councilmember Garcia if she wants to start or finish.
I won't. Why don't I be the last one?
Okay, well, then I'll put Councilmember Troutman on the spot.
Thank you, Mayor. See, I'm just pulling this. I have a couple notes there on my phone. I'm pulling them up. Could I defer? I thought I had about another 30 seconds or five minutes with Councilmember Garcia.
I'll go first and come back to you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to use what in the media broadcast world is called a tease, because I don't have permission to disclose the person I want to talk about. But I would suggest that there is a citizen in Richfield that received an extremely important honor from an extremely important organization in the metropolitan area, and as soon as I have permission to divulge his name and what the honor is, I will tell you. But for right now, keep it under your hat, but we have a very famous educator in town, and eventually I'll get around to being able to announce it. So, thank you. Councilmember Troutman?
Yes, we have a couple events. These are for kids. The first one is the Wild Wings Program at the Woodlake Nature Center, and this is for kids that love bugs. I know my son is one of those, and that's coming up August 14th. Also wanted to put that same week, the Senna Soccer Camp. That's a local soccer foundation, football foundation, and they run great programs. They run a week-long program, one in the morning and one in the evening, and I forget exactly what the cost is. It's pretty nominal. I want to say it's $5, and it's a week-long camp, so if your kids love soccer, it's a great opportunity. It's at Taft Park. They do a great job every year, a lot of volunteers, wonderful organization, and so hats off to the Senna Foundation, and be sure to sign up for that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Howard?
I just had one announcement. Want to highlight that we're almost to August, which means we're almost to Night to Unite, which will be Tuesday, August 7th, and an opportunity for community members to come together throughout Richfield and sort of get to know each other's neighbors. If you haven't had that chance, it's always a great night, and there's hundreds of block parties all across the city. I believe if you check on the city website, you can connect and see where the nearest block party is in your neighborhood, and we encourage everyone to get out and about on Night to Unite. And I know that out in force will be our Richfield Police Department and city staff and others to connect and give some fun goodies for the kids and a chance for the community to come together, and so looking forward to it and hope folks will partake.
Thank you. Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez?
This Saturday is our Urban Wildland Half Marathon and 5K in Richfield, so you can go to urbanwildland.com and still register if you'd like. So there's a half marathon and a 5K. I am not a runner, and I do it, and it's really fun. You really get to see the beautiful nature and neighborhoods that we have here in Richfield, and you get to meet your neighbors. It's really fun, a great way to just participate in something outdoors here in the community. And then tomorrow night, there's going to be a fun folk and blues concert behind Lindell Gardens at 6:30, or not behind, the Lindell Gardens area, behind Lake Winds Co-op. And it's free, open to the public. Again, it's a beautiful location, and tomorrow, the music will be Americana and blues. And lastly, I see so many awesome new faces here today, so welcome to Folks from Partnership Academy for coming to your home at City Hall. It's so important that community members come and talk to us and get involved in their local community, so welcome. Bienvenidos a las familias que están aquí en the Partnership Academy. Este es su hogar y lugar en la comunidad. Estamos muy felices en tenerlos aquí, y es muy importante que ustedes pueden participar y se sienten cómodos aquí en City Hall, con el city council, so gracias por venir.
Thank you. Just an aside, and maybe you know this, but for the marathon and the 5K, I saw it posted somewhere today that we've got several countries represented, and I can't remember the number of states, but I think it's close to 200 participants this year.
It says 187 different cities will be represented in 22 states and some folks from New Zealand.
Okay, yeah, that's really impressive. It's really grown. It's a great inducement to come to the city and see what we've got. Councilmember Garcia, are you ready?
I'm all set.
All right.
Okay, first, we've got Assumption Churches having their annual fall festival August the 19th. July the 26th, at 7:00 PM, Augsburg Park will have continued their concert series in their flute cocktails, or the band playing. And don't forget that every Saturday morning at 7:00 AM, we have the Richfield Farmers' Market, and that's in Vets Park. And then I wanted to mention that, you know, if you looked at our Richfield Sun newspaper last time around, you saw a picture of two firefighters, and they were, and they had just delivered a baby. And this happened July the 5th, and it was one of those things that, you know, the baby was coming, then they weren't sure, and then they thought, well, we'll just wait it out. Anyway, before you know it, you know babies have their own mind, so the baby decided it was going to show up, and it was too late, and they couldn't make it to the hospital no way, no how. So they called 911. The Richfield firefighters' paramedics showed up, and they delivered Findley Erickson, and he just lives down, not too far from City Hall. So that goes to show you, you know, we've got talented staff, and, you know, if you want a baby, maybe they can deliver one. Wouldn't that be nice? Yeah, but obviously, you've got to have a middleman. Anyway, and then I wanted to welcome Justin Troutman to, Justin?
Justice.
Justice Troutman to our chambers. He is here trying to help his dad. His dad needs a lot of help.
Lot of help.
Y otra vez quería yo también darles el bienvenido a ustedes que vinieron aquí a representar Partnership Academy. Entonces, si necesitan algo siempre nos pueden llamar a nosotros o alguien aquí en staff. Yes, so, I mean, that's all.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda will be the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all approved? All in favor? Boy, it's one of those nights. Next up is the consent calendar. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For those here in the audience, those at home, the consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, all of the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved and require no further action or consideration by the city council. Tonight, there are only three items on consent. Item A, consideration of the adoption of resolution authorizing a partnership agreement between the city of Richfield and the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the purchase and storage of salt through June 30th, 2022. Item B, consideration of the approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Church of the Assumption located at 305 77th Street East for their annual festival taking place on August 19th, 2018. And then finally, item C, which is consideration of the adoption of a resolution supporting a grant application to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for the Cedar Point II Housing Redevelopment Project. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I would move the consent calendar.
Second.
Before we take the vote, Councilmember Troutman had mentioned earlier that one of the items, item number three, in regards to supporting a resolution for a grant application, Councilmember Troutman thought it might be appropriate to ask Mr. Stark to come up and just kind of explain to the citizens why we approve grants such as this and what they mean in terms of our community development.
Very good idea.
And just because we're putting Mr. Stark on the spot here, it's because we appreciate your good work, we just want the community to have a chance to hear about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. So Councilmember Troutman, you know, this is really us leveraging money, other people's money. In this case, it's the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. They have a grant program. We would have to match, so it's a 50-50 program, so every dollar that we put in, they would put in another dollar. We are, as you're aware through your experience in history, the redevelopment projects are always very difficult financially to get to work, and so every resource we can bring to bear helps us with that. In this case, we would be asking for some money to help with some infrastructure costs and with some, I believe, landscaping costs. The resolution before you is fairly generally worded so that we can have a lot of latitude in what we're applying for, but again, the purpose is to use other people's money.
Thank you, Mr. Stark.
Any other comments? Consent calendar has been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar pass. Next item for consideration is the approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending Section 300 of the Code of Ordinances formally establishing a finance department and director of finance position within the city organization and amending subsection 315.11 to clarify the title of director. The department structure of the city of Richfield has been modified periodically to fit the needs of the organization. Prior to 1979, the Finance Department was an independent department within city administration. In late 1979, the department structure of the city was changed, featuring the combination of several departments and a few larger departments. This change included the establishment of the Administrative Services Department, which incorporated the finance, city clerk/deputy registrar, human resources, assessing and central service and data processing functions, called divisions now into one department. Over the years, some of the functions in their associated divisions have changed, been renamed or moved from one department to another. The Administrative Services Department has also had changes but remains structured relatively the same since its creation. However, there has not been an Administrative Services Director since 2004, when the Administrative Services Director/Assistant City Manager, Stephen DeBitch, was promoted to the position of City Manager. The practical impact of that continued vacancy is that the Finance Division and Finance Manager has reported directly to the City Manager for the past 14 years. This made good business sense in that from budgets to project spending to bonding, the City Manager and the Finance Manager typically work closer together on such matters. In addition, changes in how the city provides services and staffs its functions provides the appropriate time to formalize how the services have been delivered during the past few years and how they will likely be delivered in the future. To that end, it is recommended that the Finance Function be reestablished as an independent department. The new Finance Department would also handle those assessing functions that remain after the elimination of the Assessing Division and transfer of many of those duties to a contract for services with Hennepin County Assessing. Finally, it should be noted that most of the comparable cities to Richfield have a Finance Director, as it has generally been seen as a department-level position. The remaining divisions of the Administrative Services Department would continue to exist, including Human Resources, City Clerk, Deputy Registrar, Data Processing, and Risk Management and Government Buildings. City Manager discussed this resolution with me earlier this week, and it was kind of generated by him, so I think I'll let the City Manager kind of explain what his thinking was and why he thought it was an appropriate time to move back to this format.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. You know, in every city, one of the most critical aspects of managing a city is managing its finances, and to that end, it's really important that you have a strong Finance Division, that you have a strong Finance Director, and again, generally, in most cities, the Finance Director works very closely with the City Manager or, in some instances, a City Administrator. And I just think with all of the aspects of the financial responsibilities of this community and of this structure and this organization, the Finance Department works in conjunction with every other department to help them put together their budgets, to manage their budgets, and all of the management of the capital assets and how we finance those things. It really is something where, to me, it makes very much sense that that be looked at as an independent department, again, with direct reporting to the City Manager. This is, I think, especially true now, too, with Finance is basically taking over what's left of the Assessing Department division, because that's been eliminated. And lastly, you know, to be competitive and to retain a very good head of a Finance Division, Department, you want to be sure, number one, that you are paying the person competitively, and that I think it's important that the position be recognized as a department director position, as it is in many other cities like Richfield. So I just, I think it's really the right time to do that, especially with, you know, with my leaving coming up in the future, and I think it's time to do it.
Thank you. Other comments? Not hearing any yet. At this time, I would move to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending Section 300 of the Code of Ordinances formally establishing a finance department and director of finance position within the city organization and amending subsection 315.11 to clarify the title of director.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Next item on the agenda will be addressed by Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is consideration of the adoption of a resolution granting an amendment to a planned unit development to allow construction of a K through eight school at 6500 Nicollet Avenue, the current Bremer Bank site. Partnership Academy, which is a public charter school, has been based in Richfield since 2002, operating out of Assumption Catholic Church. The applicant, Partnership Academy, has been searching for a long, long time to find a home in Richfield, because they really have appreciated being in Richfield, and they want to continue to do so. And, you know, they've looked and looked for several years. The Bremer Bank property, they're under contract with them, and the applicant proposes to demolish the bank building and construct a two-story school facility on the site. The proposed building and outdoor area would have frontage road along Nicollet Avenue with parking provided in surface lots to the west of the building and driveway south of the building. They would go from student population of 284 approximately, because now they have grades K through five, and they will increase that enrollment to 470, which would be K through Now, Mr. Stark, I wanted to ask you, what about the neighbors? What do they think of the parking situations there?
Councilmembers and Councilperson Garcia, this microphone's so echoey. I know we've heard from the doctor's office next door, and they have some concerns about their own parking. Currently, they do some parking on the former Bremer Bank building, so the doctor's office parking is essentially spilling over off of their site, and I do believe that they're concerned about losing, you know, quote-unquote, "their spaces" on somebody else's site. I'm not sure if anybody from the doctor's office is here tonight. We have spoken with the Hub management folks, and they've expressed nothing but a willingness to work with Partnership Academy. There's still some issues to be worked out. Right now, as it stands, Partnership Academy is underparked, so what the resolution states is basically that they could not, with the current parking that they have on their site, they could not operate at full capacity. They would need to provide staff with evidence, legal evidence, that they have either expanded their parking on-site or secured parking on an abutting property in order to expand more grades to meet the parking demand that that would cause, so.
So you're satisfied with?
I'm satisfied, yes, we're satisfied that they can meet parking demands at a certain level, and we've capped them at that level, that if they want to expand beyond that, that they would have to provide us evidence of additional parking.
Okay.
May I ask a question, Councilmember? Mr. Stark, I'm just curious, have you talked to the academy and the staff over there? And the reason I'm thinking of this is, we participate with the 494 Commission, and part of the job for the 494 Commission is set up commuter situations, both commuter and they work with corporations up and down the corridor, and I'm wondering if the Partnership Academy was to solicit assistance from that subgroup over at 494, they might be able to come up with, you know, and this ties in with trying to secure additional parking, but also if, in fact, they presented a really strong commuter plan set up, either providing community cards for the staff or things like that, if that wouldn't serve to balance out between the lack of parking and their ability to expand and everything, if they can work out some sort of commuter service for their staff that they could expand and accomplish the same good educational experience they're going to have over there.
No, I think that's an excellent point. They have expressed to us that a great number of their staff utilize transit. I don't know if we know a percentage or a number, and that was one of the reasons they expressed to us, that they thought that they weren't going to have a parking problem. What it comes down to is that I talked about securing parking elsewhere. That's one of the things that would suffice if they found parking elsewhere. Another would be if they came in with planning documents, engineering documents, or what's called a, and I think this is what you were hitting on, what's called a travel demand management plan, that shows that they are meeting parking demands in some other way, essentially by not creating the demand, and in the travel demand management plan, you know, they could come up with programming that they could have, you know, whether that's providing their employees with free or discounted transit passes, participating in van pooling through Metro Transit. There's a whole number of things, and we have had conversations with them about a parking plan or travel demand management plan that would help alleviate some of that. I don't know if, what the geographic limits of the 494 commuter services are, if it, how far beyond 494 it goes, if it goes to the crosstown or not. We could look into that, but if 494 commuter services organization wasn't providing the service, somebody will.
Well, simply put, the 494 designation doesn't limit the geographical territory. The executive director of the commuter services, Melissa Madison, and I will get you contact information, and then perhaps someone from the academy can contact you, and I know she'd be more than happy to come out or send a staff person out to explain some of the opportunities they provide some of the larger businesses along 494, but like I said, it's not geographically limited by the designation of 494.
Okay, good to know.
It's a good idea, thank you, Mayor. You know, the one thing we don't want is parking headaches, because, I mean, it's, and by that, you know, we don't want any headaches that are, it's going to infringe on the neighborhoods around the area, because that's a no-no, and I don't know if the applicant has considered, you know, maybe looking at other sites that, you know, might be less of a burden in terms of parking and more accessible to people. The other thing that kind of bothers me about this, and it's not Partnership Academy's fault, but the fact is, is that, that's, you know, right now, that's, it's going to be taken off the tax rolls, and so we're not going to be getting any taxes from this project. And I think that that is such a valuable space that I see, I hate to see that happen, but I don't know if...
Just to touch on a couple of those points, with regards to Partnership Academy looking at other sites, I believe I started working with Partnership Academy about 2007, or '06, maybe, I'm looking at other sites. We've worked with them on three sites prior to this one, some with varying degrees of city staff involvement. You know, I know that it's, there are probably other sites out there. Somebody could imagine, well, they could go here, they could go here. You know, over time, we've reached out to Partnership Academy with many of those sites. I can't say every site possible, but we've always run into some roadblock here or there, and I know that, and this is more their problem than the city's problem at this point in time, but I know that they are under a bit of a time constraint with their lease at the Church of the Assumption and when they would need to be operational in a new location. The other point I'd make about parking, a lot of times when we're here talking about parking issues where we have some concerns, there's a, one big difference is, the parking concerns that we have are about either residential tenants or retail customers, and nobody has control over those folks. They're going to park where they park. These will be employees of Partnership Academy, so it's not students parking, it's employees. And, you know, to the extent it is a problem, that there's parking in the neighborhoods, the, as an employer, Partnership Academy will have some control over dealing with that.
Okay, it just, I just, I don't, it's not anything against Partnership Academy. I think there's a fine school, you know, and they've done, they have a good reputation. It's just that, I'm just thinking ahead. Anybody else have anything to say?
I would just like to say, I know that Partnership Academy has been looking for a place for a very long time, and I'm excited about this. I know that you'll be close to doubling the amount of students and families that will be coming to the area, and that area where the Hub is, and it's the heart of the city. Just having more families, more community members there is going to be great, and I think it's going to be a huge asset, so I'm very excited about this. I am glad that you're able to stay in Richfield, and I think there'll be a lot of benefits that come from this.
Yeah, and it's really unfortunate that we weren't, maybe, you know, that it took this long for them to find a place, because, you know, you really worked, you worked on that with Lisa for a long, long time, so I appreciate that at least, you know, they were doing their best, and I hope we were, too.
Yeah, we were really hopeful a couple of years ago on the cemetery site on Penn. That was not on the tax rolls either, so that, you know, wouldn't have an impact in that way, and we, I know you guys put in a couple of years' worth of work on that, and in the end, it just fell apart for reasons beyond their control.
Well, I'm going to move the adoption of a resolution granting an amended planned unit development, conditional use permit, and final development plans for 4K through eight school at 6500 Nicollet Avenue.
Second.
Moved in second. Any other comments? Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda belongs to Councilmember Howard.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I was thinking Partnership Academy is something that, because I know later on, I'm going to be looking for a place to volunteer. So, you'll see me knocking at your door, Lisa. And Ruth. Hola.
I have consideration of the appointment of two adult members to the Human Rights Commission. On July 10th, the Commissioner on the Human Rights Commission submitted their resignation from the commission due to a change in employment and inability to attend commission meetings. During the December 2017, January 28 recruitment period of the advisory commissions, four residents submitted applications and listed a preference for the Human Rights Commission but were not selected for appointment to a commission. Staff emailed these applicants, asking if they were still interested in serving on the commission, and all four applicants stated they were still interested in serving. The City Council Work Session was held earlier tonight to review the applications and discuss appointments to, of an applicant. And I want to, every time we've had one of these, I'll call it again, how fortunate we were to have just such a talented, committed group of folks that volunteered to serve on our commissions back in January, I think over 50 folks. And in this instance, we can make two appointments, and we're fortunate that two of our great candidates indicated a first preference for the Human Rights Commission. And so, tonight, by motion, I'm going to make the motion that Catherine Goodmont be appointed to the Human Rights Commission with a term expiring on January 31st, 2019, and that Robert Mulcahy be appointed to a term expiring on January 31st, 2020.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. The candidates are appointed to the planning, or the Civil Rights Commission. Next item is City Manager's report. Mr. DeBitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I would say that, just a couple of quick things. Jared, we have the, is it August 2nd now that we, August 2nd is the special City Council meeting, when you will bring in the executive search firms and interview them, and then, I believe you could make a selection that evening, be a special City Council meeting, so you can take whatever action you want. So, that's that. I just want to just say that was a pretty exciting week last week. We had the grand, groundbreaking, I should say, for the Chamberlain, which is just a huge, huge, huge improvement for that area and something we've been working on for a very long time. And on a lesser note, but still important, we had a, we had a grand opening, a grand reopening of our Penn Liquor Store, which was a very successful, Councilmember Troutman, you were there for the ribbon cutting and everything, and there were lots and lots and lots of folks there and lots of compliments on the store. So, it was exciting. And it's all about, again, the rebranding and kind of renewal of our liquor operations, because as people know, the profits from the liquor stores are what pays for most of the recreation amenities that we have in this community. The pool, the, you know, the miniature golf, that was all paid for by that. The various park buildings and the park features, the play features, all the cool things that we have, all paid for by liquor profits. So, it's very important that we maintain a vital operation and stay competitive and bring those revenues in, so it doesn't cost the taxpayers money for those recreation assets. That's all I have.
Thank you. Claims and payroll?
Before I move claims and payroll, I just wanted to tell Mr. DeBitch that I took personal responsibility for that liquor store on Penn, and I said to Commissioner Debbie Gotal, I said, you know, we want to make sure that you want to shop at a super-good-looking store that's really efficient and really nice-looking. And she thanked me profusely for that. So, I wanted to pass that along to you. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and payroll passes. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.